Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Mid-11th Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, October 15th, 2014 meeting. Who has the dog this morning?
I do, I'm gonna have Tim come up and...
Welcome, Mr. Phil Blatt.
Hi, this is kennel number 15. She's a Border Collie Shepherd mix, approximately seven years old. She was found in Rochester. She, like I said, she's five to six years old. And we have 29 dogs in the kennel, so you're more than welcome to come and look for your dog. We also adopted 15 dogs last week, we had a good week and we needed it. We took in over 50 dogs last month in September. So we need all the help we can get, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim, appreciate it. Nice job over there.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet from place within jurisdiction, Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you Commissioner Kayla, I do have some potential new hires, like to start with the board, Golden Acres, maybe in the Maintenance Department, Job Family Services. Also, I'll give you an update on our whole final discussion with the E911 employees, negotiation and where we're at with that. And other possible other negotiations going on within the county, I have to look and see, I left something on my desk, so I may we have to address something today. I'll update that when we come out. All of those topics are allowed under the sun, well, excuse me, and pending litigation. So all of those topics are allowed under the sunshine, I have an executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular meeting today, we go into the executive session, we talk about those items that I've outlined. Thank you.
Approving waiving of the minutes of October 8?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Accepting the Finley-Davis Actuary Report and establish Lorraine County Healthcare Race and Contribution Shares for non-bargaining employee/employees for the year 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cordez, you have paperwork there to talk about what it's going up to.
Well, I didn't bring my spreadsheets, but I can talk about it very easily. We had a pretty good year. Last year, let's wind back to the hands of time just a little bit, we saw quite a bit increase and rather than passing along that whole increase to the groups and the employees and obviously ourselves, we divided that rate in half and only raised it half of what the actuary report asked for. And the reasoning there is I thought we had a temporary spike in our claims. The actuary does a very, very good job, but they're not looking at a longer snapshot, they're looking at, you know, a year of mature claims and, you know, I went back and looked over a couple of years and just thought we had a bad year. Well, the good thing is, we had a good year and we have good cash flow in the account and our increase this year is only about 6% across the board. So, you know, we did have that up and we dropped a little bit and we come back to the trend line, like I thought we would. So I'm pleased with the reaction of the plan, even though we're shrinking in size, we had a couple of groups decide all their options were better for them. Interestingly, our cost per member is actually less now than it was last year with those groups gone, which indicated to me that rather than being, they thought they were potentially low utilizers so they could do better elsewhere, but my reports indicate that we're doing better without those groups. Now, once again, I can't prove that, I just know that we look at cost per member, cost for enrollee, you know, I break it all down into that, and our cost per member is down now, which hasn't happened in the last couple of years. So things are pretty good with the healthcare plan, you know, I'm excited that the increase stayed in, you know, mid-single digits and hopeful for the year going forward, but you do realize the ACA is gonna have a huge impact on us next year. Some of those things were delayed the last couple of years. One of those is coming up in November with regard to the risk banks that I need to address. There is some additional benefits that are being provided to employees with regard to mandatory services that have to be provided that are gonna have a cost. All of those things are gonna have a cost impact, they've been delayed. We thought they were gonna come a year ago, actually I think two years ago they started about they should be coming, then January 14th was the big target date, that shifted again to January 15th. I haven't heard any talk about delays again, so we may be incurring that. I will tell you what, the increase in benefits also gave us the ability to manage the plan with a spousal carve-out. I have talked to all about the spousal carve-out on the plan and I think that we need to take a strong look at having spousal carve-out. Plans around us, almost everybody that I'm talking to in different groups has done the spousal carve-out, which means that...
We're the only one left without it.
Well, we're not the only one, I don't wanna mislead you and say we're the only one, but lots of the big groups have done it. Let me explain spousal carve-out for folks that may not know it. What it does is it gives you the ability to not provide healthcare to a spouse that may be covered under a group healthcare plan from another employer. When other employers doing that, they're driving people to our plan, they're driving, you know, all the spouses and families to our plan. If we don't do it, then we're gonna bear those costs and our membership is gonna bear those costs. Doesn't say we won't provide healthcare as spousal, it just simply says if they're eligible for other healthcare coverage, they have to take that first. I will tell you, all the retirement systems have done that too. It used to be, next year they'll be putting that into effect, it used to be if you were retired, you could take the retiree plan healthcare and you wouldn't take the healthcare from the employer. Not only they've done spousal carve-out, they've done complete, if you're eligible for other healthcare, you don't get ours. Now, we're not doing that. What the ACA allows with the increase in other benefits, it allows plans to choose whether they want the spousal carve-out option. I think that we need to incorporate that all at the same timeframe and bring it all to fruition on the 1st of January for 2015 and it's gonna be some work with that too, because then we have to verify employment, they have to bring, you know, eligibility slips, but that's the trend and that's what ACA has done. The offset of them mandating certain benefits levels that the groups may not have had already and we didn't have some of those things is the ability to do the spousal carve-out, so that each employer is bearing their responsibility.
For their employees.
For their employees, not that it's shifted to one group. I'll need to know in the next week or so, soon, on doing that, 'cause I need to get the enrollment process moving pretty quick, but we have a little bit of time.
Does that change the premiums at all?
Excuse me?
Will that change the cost of the premium?
It'll affect next year's rates, it won't have an effect this year.
You mean for 2015?
Correct. It may not have any impact with the change in benefits, you know, we have to talk about a few things that went on over the last couple of years. A few of the things that we had to put into place was covering dependent children to the age of 26. Now, in the state of Ohio, we're exempt from that. The state of Ohio has it to 28, we're to 26 under the federal guidelines. We have to make healthcare available between 26 and 28. Doesn't say you have to pay for it, that means the group has to make the availability for that participant that may otherwise not be covered under the parents to purchase the plan. It's similar to Cobra, it's a two-year, but you read the code, it doesn't say, it says you have to make available, doesn't say you have to pay for it. So we're following all of those things, but that's added a significant cost. And we're gonna continue to see those costs from the ACA as we go along. We have to rewrite the plan descriptions, we're working on that, we're working on new contracts, we're, right now, we're in the marketplace, we're bringing the healthcare contracts to you in the next couple of weeks that we just negotiated. So a lot's going on. The spousal carve-out may just offset a lot of those increased costs. We'll have to wait and see, we'll have to see what the trend comes back and what the experience in the claims are when they come back. It's just something that we need to deal with. And remember, we're down to about 1,500 contracts with about 4,200, 4,300 users right now. We were much bigger. When the plan was at its biggest, we were about 2,050 contracts with over 5,000 users.
How's it gonna impact individuals? Do we have any data showing how many spouses we have on our plan that possibly have insurance from other?
Well, I wouldn't know that. See, we won't know if they have other insurance.
Right.
I could probably get how many spouses, I know how many enrollments, enrollies there are, the problem is, you know, we'll have to carve through that. It used to be easier when children left the plan when they were 18 years old. So can I get just spouses? Probably. I don't think I have that in my reports right now, but I should be able to get that report done.
Yeah, that's what I would like to look at, is how many spouses we have, what's the cost gonna be, and then take a look at how it's gonna impact the families because...
Well, I can't tell you what the cost is gonna be, 'cause I don't know.
Right.
And the cost isn't a factor with this, it's limiting cost, that's the factor. So as far as the impact of the families, I can't tell you that, because under the Coordination of Benefits rules, and this is why they allow this under the ACA and gave that ability to plans to manage like this, is because under the birthday rule, Coordination of Benefits Birthday Rule says that whoever birthday falls first, that plan is the plan that pays first. And then the second parent pays as the next planning line.
That's for children?
That's for children in Coordination of Benefits. That allows the plans to level out, each employer that provides healthcare to not accept claims from other, technically from other groups that are providing it. You can see that without us doing spousal carve-out, people couldn't be driving to our plan, and they have already, we know that, because other groups already elected the spousal carve-out. We've been able to elect it, but we chose to wait until more effects of the ACA became, we needed to be implemented with January 1st, 2015. Because we did talk about this last year, they delayed a few things and we decided to delay that, but we need to make a decision. Not right at this moment, sitting here, but...
Before the 1st of the year?
No. We have to do enrollments coming up and we have to verify employment eligibility and do all of that, so it's all coming up. And Tom, it wouldn't change the cost of the plan at all.
Well, and what I'm talking about is the cost to the employees, because it's gonna, or to the families, because it's gonna impact them as far as a financial burden.
There's no way we telling, because I can't tell...
Right. Well, I know you can't tell, but there is gonna be a cost on it to them, because they're gonna go from paying one premium for healthcare to now paying two, if there's individuals that work, if their spouse works. They'll have to pay now for their other spouses work.
Sure.
And here, so...
Well, again, you'll find lots of plans doing that right now.
Right. I know, that was one of the holes in Obamacare, that a lot of people are changing because of the cost.
You know, I don't, I'm not gonna say I agree or disagree with what's going on, my job is to manage your plan. We're spending 28 to 30 million dollars a year on this plan, we've been doing it for 20 years, we seem to keep our head above the waterline and, you know, I have a responsibility to tell you what all these options are, and of course you're the fiduciaries of the plan, I'm the administrator of the plan. I can't sit by and watch other groups around us, I know, I'll give you an example, I know EMH did it last year and I believe Mercy has done it. The spousal carve-out is the way that they're going. I don't, whether I agree with it or not, has no bearing. I'm trying to keep the plan surviving and keep it functioning correctly and out of the red.
When you first started talking about our plan and it's doing well, but there is an increase and there is gonna be an increase to the monthly premiums for both us and the employees.
Correct.
There's 10%, so I don't want people to think that, you know, there's not gonna be an increase, 'cause there is going to be...
Well, as I said, we went up about 6%.
But we didn't pass that all on to the employees last time, but we are going to increase their premium now.
Well, the 6% is very reasonable.
Right.
The one thing that I'm gonna tell you about healthcare, the cost of healthcare never goes down.
Right.
Even though we had a good year and our cost per member is down, that's because of utilization in the group, but the particular service didn't get any cheaper, it's just less utilization. So when you have that kind of cost gain, don't for a moment think that the x-ray didn't go up x amount of dollars each year. Cost of healthcare is going up. Now, in Northeast Ohio, the cost of healthcare is going up much faster than most places in the nation. It's one of the fastest cost growth in the country, probably right up in the top five or six.
Probably because we have the Cleveland Clinic in our neighborhood.
Right. They call them must-have facilities. Everybody wants the must-have facilities and everybody goes to the must-have facilities and of course, we know that the costs are exponentially more at those facilities than they are at other facilities. We've had those discussions over the years too and...
Blood test facility fees, take your pick.
Right.
Well, I know a lot of companies are also going to, I'm gonna just use the name, say University Hospital, in order to keep the cost down there, that way they can actually keep their families on one plan and it reduces costs, because you're not going with a premier facility. But they have a out-of-network, or out-of-network where they can pay 20, 30, or 40% of that if they choose to go that route.
Well, they can go to university now, it's an out-of-network, there's a higher deductible and a higher cap, but it's not gonna bankrupt anybody, but it's higher than the in-network. I don't think university health is any less costly than Cleveland Clinic, they're a renowned world hospital in theirself. We sometimes look at Cleveland Clinic, 'cause they do more advertising, but university, it's huge and they got some premier facilities, they have people flying in to go to their facilities, just like Cleveland Clinic does. We're really fortunate in Cleveland, because Cleveland is not that big of a city, hasn't been for a long time, but we still have two very, very premier health delivery networks.
And Mercy's no slouch either.
Well, Catholic Health Partners is the biggest...
Large system in the state.
Well, they're also going through, they're using university now as well.
Well, they've all partnered together, provide services, 'cause not just one can do it all.
But unfortunately, they're, they're falling into a university, but they don't have Cleveland Clinic. You go, you get, the big gorilla around here is MMO, you're with MMO, they don't have university, they got Cleveland Clinic. You know, at the end of the day, I wanna go back in time to, you know, the mid-'90s when we had both and you could pick where you wanted to have your care. University has rainbow babies, it's renowned, it's right up there in the top five in the country for children, yet we have to access that as an out-of-network facility. It wasn't always like that. We used to be able to have all of them in a network, but we don't drive that industry, we ride on that bus and we haven't had access to all of the systems in Northeast Ohio now for about 15 years. I don't see that changing anytime soon. So we're gonna have to pick one or the other, do I think one is less costly or the other? I think they're fairly comparable. Plans change, designs change, and if you wanna drive traffic or herd traffic into a tighter pattern, sure, I could save some additional funds. The more you restrict, the more you control, the more you have a say over the cost. That would be up to the board, quite frankly, a lot of those things would have to be negotiated, because we have 20 union contracts that, you know, we provide a level of healthcare and things in.
Well, you're gonna get us the numbers we need, how many spouses we think we have on there versus, I mean, we have a lot of single people with family plans, so there'd be no spouse.
Sure, and I can't tell you how many of those spouses have access to other healthcare, they have no way of knowing that.
But there's gotta be some type of an average or a percentage based on national figures of how many people, so we had an idea of what the effect was.
It may be Ted, I don't know.
There's enough studies out there, I've seen them sitting on shows enough over the years everywhere, that I'm sure we can come up with some type of responsible number.
Well, see, some of the problem is, some of the employers are abandoning their plans and driving them to the...
ACA.
Right.
Yeah, I know.
So does, if an employer doesn't provide a plan and is willing to drive to the ACA and we do provide a plan, technically, they don't provide healthcare with the employer and we can't mandate that they go to the ACA. So that's why the data is being newly developed.
Okay.
And that, I'm not trying to indicate that I can't get some stuff, but nobody really knows, the dust has gotta settle on all of this. Funny part is, we'll know retrospectively whether we threw the dice correctly or not. So I'll get what I can, I'll try to find out how many actual spouses are on the plan and see, but I still think that we need to react and take advantage of the ability on the ACA to make those administrative changes to the plan while we can. If we don't make those administrative plans, changes to the plan, and we do them at some later date, there's a good chance I'll have a hard time being able to support that in the union contracts. The window's open now, later on, it may become a subject of negotiation. There may even be some problem with doing it now, where they'll demand to negotiate that, I don't believe we have to. We didn't negotiate adding the benefits to the plan the ACA required and I don't think we have to negotiate the ability to have spousal carve-out that ACA allows. So that, our window is here.
Have we had, or have you had any dialogue with the representatives for the employees to see if they would prefer to go to a, as you referred, a herding mentality directing it to one facility versus going through and doing a reduction of services for spouses? Have you had any dialogue?
I don't usually have dialogue along those lines.
I know, I was just, I didn't, I know you have good relationships, I was just wondering.
I do, I can tell you now that I expect them to be against spousal carve-out. I can understand their position. They're more than, I'm sure they'll be more than willing to accept the benefits that we have to newly provide. So I think there'll be some issues with that, and as far as condensing the plan down, they'll never be favorable to that. That's one of the reasons why most employers that provide healthcare plans have, you know, a larger network and they have either the university or Cleveland Clinic in their networks.
Back when we were talking about that, I thought, well, it wouldn't affect me so much, because I go to Superior Medical Care. Well, lo and behold, Cleveland Clinic swallowed them up. Now, they're part of Cleveland Clinic and University and Cleveland Clinic are both going around and taking all the independents and making them part of their group, so...
I told you five years ago, Cleveland Clinic would buy Superior. Remember, we were arguing with MMO because of the reimbursement rates at Superior versus the reimbursement rates at the clinics?
So you never know when you decide to pick one, that your doctor may become part of the other.
Well, and that is the case, but like Mercy employees, they actually have to use their staff and also university, because of the partnership they have there. So it can be challenging, but their university is a good hospital, just as Mercy is. So they have a lot of doctors to choose from. And this doesn't impact me either way, and I don't believe it impacts you, the decision we're making, as far as spousal carve-out. My concern is, how's it gonna impact the individuals, especially individuals who are maybe on the lower end of the wage earning here, with raises that they did receive? This could be wiped out.
Absolutely, for sure.
Right, you're definitely taking it right back.
You know, so...
Those decisions have been for a year.
For me, I kinda lead towards the directing it to one facility, like a university or Cleveland Clinic, whatever one it's gonna be, that would give us the greatest cost savings, so we can still reduce our costs, but also provide the services to the employers.
Well, our in-network provider is the Cleveland Clinic.
Right. Well, and that's what we would have to look at, is do we get rid of that Cleveland Clinic?
Tom, I can tell you that we've had, back, see, people forget the evolution of things, especially in Northeast Ohio, not just with us. The Cleveland Clinic used to be a tertiary facility, that is, you went there for specialized care and you went to your general practitioner and the local facilities for your routine care. And if there was things that they couldn't accomplish here, then they would refer you into the Cleveland Clinic network. That was all well and fine in the early '90s and then Cleveland Clinic and university, both of them, just started exploding and getting into more primary care and opening up the clinics and building new hospitals and moving forward. And so rather than just stay in the specialized care, and that was costly at the time, they've increased their cost in the primary care. People now go to the clinic and they have a great facility, I'm not gonna tell you they're not wonderful places, they are, but they go there and they get a blood test and it costs 10 times what it costs to go to LabCorp.
Right.
And people wanna do that. And I can tell you, it's gonna be 10 times as much in a university clinic. And they have those, they have buildings just like Cleveland Clinic there, so the key to controlling healthcare cost is making sure that there's other alternatives, like Superior, and there used to be Tri-City, that Mercy bought Tri-City out. Everybody buying everybody up, which is increasing costs, it's not decreasing costs, because the availability in the market is less, so there's still demand and there's less availability.
No competition.
That could drive up the cost, with everybody. We need to go back to specialized care in those must-have facilities and have routine care done in other facilities. I don't know how to do that anymore, any longer.
That horse has left the barn.
And our group has been using now, you know, through MMO, Cleveland Clinic network for 20 years. To move a whole group off of that and into university could be very challenging. I'm not telling you it can't be done, I'm not telling you we can't do it, I think you're gonna find a lot of issues.
Yeah. Well, again, I'm looking at ways to try to keep the cost down. I know other companies, they go through, you have to utilize local, like Mercy or EMH, and I understand the partnership with university there. And then if they wanna go to Cleveland Clinic, they still have to get a referral, or if they wanna go through and utilize services that would be 10 times the cost that they would have to pay for it.
That would be a structural change in the plan that we wouldn't make without having to negotiate it.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering, that's why I'm bringing this up, if we're looking at making a change, if it's gonna impact the employees, would it be better to actually talk with our, talk with the unions now about it and get their input?
I already know what their input is, they're not gonna wanna do it. It's an easy read, this one, you know, this is not something that's gonna be complicated. They recognize it there, and if you do the spousal carve-out, I anticipate some challenges to it. So I don't really need to meet and ask them, 'cause I know what their answer will be, I give enough respect to know what their answer is.
I think Tom's asking to, what would you rather have, this or that? Like the spousal carve-out or going to specific, is that where you're trying to get at?
Yes, I am.
I gotta tell you, I can't take us to another network by the end of the year.
Right.
I've already done all the RFPs and renewals and all the contracts and negotiations are done, they're coming to you for approval. I, you know, I looked at what Mercy and EMH was doing and I've been looking at it off and on for three years and they finally have now come together, because EMH was bought out by university. The truth of the matter is, they couldn't get along with each other until UH bought them out. They were respectful of each other, but they couldn't, they couldn't get this thing off the ground.
What it's gonna come down to is the board making the decision on what type of healthcare we wanna provide by the end of the year. We'll make a decision whether it's gonna be a spousal carve-out or not?
Ted, I gotta do enrollments in November.
I know you do. I know you do. We don't have but a couple of weeks on this.
Right. The, the, so it's November, you know, by November, I have to have the rates out there, what the structures are gonna look like, and, and then we gotta start doing the paperwork.
So, you need to bring us some data that we're asked for, to see how many spouses there might be within the plan, and we can take a look at it, see what the impact is, and decide if we're gonna pull it or not.
Every spouse is going to have to bear the cost of whatever their employer's insurance rates are. So, automatically, every married couple is going to have a big hit to their income.
Laurie, the employers here are doing it around us.
I know.
So, that means they're driving them to our plan.
I understand. I'm just saying, that's gonna be the outcome, which is really unfortunate. It's like, if you're married, you're being penalized for being married.
If we're willing to bear those costs.
Right.
Then we're fine. I can, I can only tell you that I, I anticipate with more and more spousal carve-out happening out there in these groups, I anticipate more and more of that cost being absorbed by us. It's a reality of life. I, and if, if we're willing to deal with that, then that's fine too. I, I've already kinda done my job here. I've, I've informed you of, of what's, what's there.
There's also the ability, Jim, no different than we've done when we come to changing the vacation buildup days and stuff like that. You can do a grandfathered, as of this date, anyone there afterwards would not be allowed to have their.
It would take too long with the healthcare, Ted. It would take too long, because we don't have that much turnover in employees. And they, and we did that, employees don't retire for twenty or thirty years. So, right now.
Okay, so you're saying no impact on it?
Those costs are gonna come. The, it's, it's a, and I'm not sure it would decide, it would survive the discrimination clauses under, under certain requirements that were imposed on the plans not to discriminate with regard to membership. I'd have to look at that, but the costs are gonna be immediate. If there were costs that were gonna be down the road, we could have time to implement. The, and again, the only reason I bring it up is I know groups around us are doing this. And that's, that's naturally gonna drive those people that have spouses at those organizations to our plan, because we don't require that.
And you got the, the change is coming in effect in the federal level at November fifteenth, which is going to drive costs up as well, so.
Well, absolutely. We have to pay into the risk bank.
And then the children of that couple are still going to be paid by birthday if they both have insurance?
Under the coordination of benefits rules, they would be paid by whosoever birthday was first would be primary, then this, we would, we would, thereafter, the other plan would be secondary.
Well, not necessarily. My thinking would be if the spouse didn't work here and they picked up their own plan, they would pick up a singles plan wherever they were at, and not a family plan.
Maybe.
So, that would change the coordination of benefits, would fall into whoever had the family care. Now, would the spouse then, who had a single plan but part of their government-employed spouse's family plan, that would be their secondary then, correct?
It depends.
Okay.
I, I can't tell you the plan structure of the other employer.
Right.
It, it may be that if they're required to take that, the shifting in cost may take the family the other way, because they may be bearing more cost over there, so it'll be less costly to take our single plan and take the family plan over. I can't, you know, I can, we can come up with all kinds of scenarios.
I would think if it was that way currently though, they'd already be doing that, our employees.
Not necessarily, Ted, because we don't have the spousal carve-out right now. So, where, they're only required to have one plan.
Well, I know employees of ours whose family members work at Ford, they don't take our healthcare at all.
Right.
They take the Ford healthcare currently.
I, I don't know if that's completely accurate, you know, and I.
I do know actual employees who do that, Jim. It's not, they're, our employees who's, they take their other, the spouse's healthcare.
I, I was, I was married to a Ford worker for twenty years, and we took both, on both families. We had both had family plans. Okay? Depends on your situation.
Right.
You know, everybody drives around and does what they need to do that works best for them. That's why I can't give you an absolute. They, I don't know what the other employees' plans look like, I don't know what their family medical conditions are, we don't know. Those are not, we don't know those things, so we don't know at the end of the day what's gonna absolutely work for them. They're gonna make the maximum advantages that, that they can for their particular situation. There are some that chose not to have ours and take that. There are others that chose to just have ours and not have that, or have both. I'm sorry, please.
No, I was just wondering, with other entities that we help out with the healthcare, will this allow them, will this change allow them to back out of the contract that they're currently in? If they decided to go with a different health.
If they decide to go, they decide to go. My, my, my primary focus on running this healthcare plan is for the county. The, the groups that we enroll, I mean, we got groups of one out there.
Right.
We're, we're, we're the provider, we're the carrier of last choice. We take everybody, bringing you downtrodden, you weak or. We, we lose money on those groups as a group. But, where we have a consortium that, that is open, and for those town, we have townships with two or three.
Right.
Folks on the plan. They don't have anyplace else to go. And we, you know, twenty-five years ago, we decided that we were gonna run this for political subdivisions and be open to them if they wanted to get involved. That, maybe they need to send their employers to the exchanges now. I, I don't know. They're gonna do what works for them, not what works for us.
I was, all right. Just provide the numbers, that way we can look to see what the.
Yeah, well, you said numbers, the only number I'm getting.
What the spouses.
Amount of spouses.
Right.
So, that's one number. I'll, I'll see how long, I don't think it'll take me very long to, to get that. And, and I'm sorry I don't have absolutes here, but you can see that this is, this is a moving target. It, it's, I, I wish I had those absolutes, it would make it so much easier for me to manage the plan for, for you guys, but they're, they're not out there. And, and so, we need to take advantage of those things we can while we can. And again, I, I anticipate that there may be some blowback on that.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want to tell you it's just gonna be clean and that's it, it's gonna go that easily. I, I don't, I don't anticipate that. It never is that easy. But, we had a long talk over setting the rates, but it was a good.
Well, it ended a lot of the other.
It's talks we've been having over the last year anyway, so it gets it out here and, lets people know that we don't ignore this stuff. I talked to you guys individually all through the week on, on things. And this, this is, this is the hard part, because this affects not only the employees, but their families. And it's always a very sensitive and very touchy issue, and I recognize that. But also having no healthcare is even worse. And that's why we manage this plan pretty aggressive.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Calhoun?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Our community development approved the semi-annual revolving loan fund report for January first through June thirty, two thousand fourteen, is submitted.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Nothing.
Ms. Calhoun?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer Men Resolution thirteen nine eighteen adopted November sixth, two thousand thirteen, approving an intern and construction administration inspection services contract with K E McCartney and Associates, Inc., in the amount of four hundred forty-four thousand three hundred thirty-eight dollars for the Griswold Road Project, Alaria Township in the City of Alaria. Amendments to reflect the federal OPWC funding was less than anticipated, therefore, one hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-five cents will actually be paid by the MVGT account and reimbursed by Ted. I forgot to put that part in there.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Holtzman, you wanna give us an update on how the project's going? Not only you with the Engineers Office, you're also an Alaria Township trustee. And I haven't been getting any phone calls, so I'm assuming it's going pretty good.
Good morning Commissioners. Actually, the project is going pretty well. They pretty much, they finished the sanitary sewer work. They've finished the concrete paving between Leona and the tracks. All three lanes and two lanes have been poured from the tracks to Lake Avenue. So, this Friday morning, we're gonna reopen the road to two-way traffic to the local businesses. So, we're gonna, so, 'cause there's still one lane to build, and then some sidewalks and other work. But, we pretty much will have all the concrete work done, the road totally complete by Thanksgiving. And so, hopefully, the only work next spring will be some final grading and seeding. So, the project is going well.
Railroad's completed, a lot of the work.
Railroad work is done.
It is all done?
It's done.
Wonderful, okay. Beautiful.
Yeah, so that was a little bit of a delay. We had to kinda work on their schedule, but they finally came in and completed their work. So, their work is done, the sewer's done, just one lane of paving to pave and some driveway aprons, and we'll shut her down for the year.
So, no more flooding for the businesses?
Let's hope not.
Let's hope not.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, thank you.
I heard you went down there with your dress shoes on.
Oh, yeah, I've been, I've been on Grizzle Road so many times.
Well, they call, you gotta go respond and see what it is.
Yep.
The building's flooding out.
Right.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Calhoun?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Cordez?
I think I had more than enough to say today, thank you.
Mr. Anus?
I don't have a report this morning.
Wow. Commissioners' report?
Not too much. Last Wednesday evening, went to the college to see girls with guitars. It was a great night. I got to see most of those girls that were there on The Voice, and they did a spectacular job, it was really fun. Friday, I had an emergency management meeting with my budget director, and will be hopefully ready to send some letters out Tuesday, and we'll talk about it on Wednesday for the emergency response, no, not, what is it? Notification, emergency notification system. So, really excited about that. And Saturday was a good little fundraiser, and I want to thank people for coming out. It was really a nice event, good food, and we had a lot of fun. I was second. Did you guys fill out the, the, to see how much everything was gonna be valued at? Did you do that?
No.
No? I was like in the lead until some, one other person beat me out, I was really close, so.
We thought you knew how to shove.
I did, I really, really close. Let's see. On this Saturday, again, the collection center, we're gonna be having the shred day. And now, I, I didn't mention last week that they're also doing a food drive, so if you have some food items that you'd like to donate, and hot dogs, and we'll all be there at ten o'clock to, to give the fifty, fiftieth thousandth car their recycled table and chair set. And then, what else is going on? Uh, the following, next Wednesday, Job Fair for Goodwill at Midway Mall. And, my gosh, there was just so much, even though it was Monday, was, we were off, it was such a busy week.
Busy all day?
Yeah. That's it for now, thank you.
Now, WAC's governing board met on Friday, awarding dollars to projects from leftover Butter Nut Ridge Road, received more funding to get that project moving, we had a shortfall there. Thank the board for approving all of that. Yeah, just a weekend of events. Monday morning, I serve on the United Way Emergency Food and Shelter Board, we met, getting our allocations, actually serve on a subcommittee for emergency utilities. We'll be getting our finer, final dollars amount, but it looks like Lorain County's gonna get up to forty-two thousand dollars more than we had last year. So, we'll be meeting in our subcommittees to do the recommendation. The RFP should be out there now for the entities to file for awards. Monday afternoon, I'd like to thank Pastor Small and his staff at Second Baptist Church in Alaria. They're having the one hundred eighteenth Ohio Baptist Convention here in Alaria this week, so I gave opening remarks there. Great turnout. What else? Oh, I met with Dr. Fisher this week, and Dr. Fisher from Development and Disabilities then met with Jim about the change in Medicaid waivers, and how that's gonna affect Lorain County providing adult services. It's a hot button in the state, but the feds are making changes, the state of Ohio's negotiating with them.
I'm meeting with her this afternoon.
Yeah, so it's one of those wait and see and see what's happening. I guess that does it. I guess that's end, oh, I do have one more thing. The board received today from the Court of Common, Common Pleas and Clerk of Courts, they're looking for office space. Apparently, they've hired a new director for their Integrated Justice Information System that they haven't purchased yet, but they are looking for space and are looking for use of an unoccupied office located on the first floor of the Justice Center. Will you send that over to Karen then, Jim? I don't know what the use of that empty office is, or what we're gonna do with that.
Well, I'm certainly excited that they asked us first.
Before taking it over?
The.
Changing the locks on it?
Definitely an improvement in our relationship. I will certainly have Karen take a look at it, if the board's agreeable to the, to the space. I see no reason why we would deny them.
Well, on the latter, the only thing I see here is that the prosecutors aren't signed up for this, and neither is Domestic Relations Court at this time.
Sign up for what?
Judge Betler signing off asking for this request. It's Judge Walther, Clerk Nabokowski, and then Judge Betlesky is the admin judge, so I don't know what the other judges are doing yet. We haven't had an update as of recently what's happened.
Quit getting invited to those meetings.
Yeah.
Well, that happens when you start fighting with each other. So, I, I'm, I'm not surprised by that, I don't think you should be, but I certainly.
Well, you know what I was surprised about, which I learned in the paper, I haven't gotten to see the actual report yet, but the cost of updating the courthouse was really low compared to what I thought.
You will be getting the proposal as part of our pending and ongoing litigation. You can take a look at it. They forgot to throw in the bag of grass seed for the lawn, but everything else is in there.
Toilet paper rolls for the bathrooms?
Well, like I was telling Commissioner Cross yesterday morning, I'd like to see, you know, let's save the grand old dame there in the middle of downtown Alaria for three million bucks, and we think it can be less than that anyway from discussions. We traded between the reporter last night, so I get a chance to talk to you, but three million bucks on the fifth floor, or three million dollars invested right down here in the middle of the city. I see a better benefit doing that. And if we can value-engineer it, I think we can get those numbers down a lot more.
We'll talk about that when Zach writes.
Okay. Tom?
Multiple events, Nowack on Friday, as Commissioner Calhoun stated. Firefighters, Pancake Breakfast always do a great job in Amherst. And, you know, Goodwill, Good Times out there, actually getting, get out there, I forgot how many friends I actually had that served on there, I forgot they were serving, so. Too many things to mention as far as going around the county. It's, seems like I just wake up and go anymore, so. I appreciate everyone for the invites to the events, and many more going on. Township Association meeting is this week, look forward to that.[1620.94]